Okay, it's 5:30. I will call to order the West Fargo Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Second Order of Business Approval of the Minutes from November 9th, 2021.
Move approved is digitally presented.
It's been moved and seconded or approved as published. All those with favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. It's approved. So before we go on to the next topic, I'd like to start with a greeting to our new director, Aaron Nelson. Welcome, Aaron. Hopefully you stick around a little longer than the last one.
What's your background?
That'd be great. Maybe a little introduction.
Thanks for the welcome. Aaron Nelson is my name. I come here from the city of Fargo. I worked there for about past eight and a half years. Prior to that, I worked for one year in Morton County, North Dakota, which is the county that Mandan is in, if you're not familiar. I earned my community regional planning, master's of community regional planning degree from Iowa State University. Prior to that, yup, those cyclones. Prior to that, I was at U N D, had a little background in G I S and geography, political science, originally from Fargo, North Dakota, so grew up in the area here, so happy to be here.
Very good. Thanks for joining.
Yeah, thank you.
So item number three is the Fargo Moorhead Metro COG. What's that stand for?
C O G.
Council of Governments.
Council of Governments, thank you. West Fargo Traffic Calming Study Final Report Presentation. Champa? Alrighty. Hi there.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Luke Champa. I'm an Associate Transportation Planner and the Project Manager of the West Fargo Traffic Calming Study, which I'll present to you now, if I could find it. There you go. Alright, so this was a joint project between Metro COG and West Fargo. I might do full screen, see if that shows up a little better. We worked this into our Unified Planning Work Program at Metro COG, meaning that the study was done internally by Metro COG staff, and it was also eligible for 80% federal funding to do the study with 20% local funds as part of our local dues formula. We kicked this project off in March of 2021, and our final draft is here now, out to the public and in front of you all today, with a final public comment period, end date of January 3rd, in conjunction with the City Commission Meeting. Go over a quick summary for you all today, including an introduction, study process, community engagement, the traffic calming measures, recommendations, funding and resources. What is traffic calming? Really briefly, it's a physical roadway feature that alters driver behavior, used to reduce speed and enhance safety. What is not traffic calming? These are traffic control devices such as speed limit signs, dynamic signs or stop signs. Those require enforcement by the city police department, so those should not be considered traffic calming. And why is this important? Why are we using traffic calming in West Fargo? It's really to forward the goals and objectives of two core transportation planning documents of the city, including Metro Grow, which is the long-range metropolitan transportation plan, and West Fargo 2.0, Your Comprehensive Plan. And both of those plans have strong livability, multimodal transportation and safety goals and objectives in them, which traffic calming relates to. On page seven of the draft report, there's a couple of figures that just show the importance of safety on residential streets in West Fargo. As speed increases, the risk of death is exponential for pedestrians, for example. And you can see right around that 30 mile per hour mark is where that that risk really, really increases and crosses over into the fatal category. Where are we proposing to use traffic calming in West Fargo? These measures that we'll talk about today should really only be considered on local and collector roadways, typically those with a speed limit of 25 miles per hour, residential in nature, although you shouldn't exclude commercial walkable areas. And these can be proactively addressed in new developments or retroactively, retrofitted into the existing street network where a problem may exist. So our process for the study looked at six priority locations in West Fargo. These are in red on this map, and these were really the impetus of the project because of resident feedback and concerns that probably almost every department in the city government received about speeding and safety concerns on these corridors, including 2nd Street East, 15th Avenue East, 16th Street East, 7th and 10th Street West, and Beat and Drive. And really, we took a deep dive into these corridors to establish some traffic calming recommendations that could be implemented, community and citywide. And then in Appendix A of the report, you'll see site-specific recommendations for the six. So our study process was led by robust community engagement. That was a pretty focused effort of the team, and then existing conditions and traffic conditions and subsequent analyses about the problems that the people were seeing on the street. And this was all led by the Study Review Committee. The names listed there on this slide, including staff from engineering, police, planning, public works and administration from the city, and then Metro COG staff, including myself, were on that, and really served as the guide of the study direction, and we met at important milestones of the study process. We included some robust community engagement, sending out postcards, having online surveys, social media posts and the like, an email subscription option. And this was really at two important milestones of the project. The first was the identification of the traffic calming issue, and really narrowing down specific locations on these corridors where people were seeing issues or had concerns. And then a second time to gauge the public support of the menu of traffic calming options, as we like to call it, so people could learn more about those options and then rate their level of support for each. Which brings us to the traffic calming measures, and I want to breeze through all of these, but it was important for the study team and the SRC to provide an implementable list of options. So we worked very closely with the SRC to narrow down the list based on budget feasibility, the effectiveness, maintenance and operation considerations, and other impacts such as emergency services or vehicular impacts. And then, one of the most important areas of discussion was the ability for implementation, given our northern climate, and snow removal. So the implementable traffic calming options were narrowed down to 10, and these were the ones that were presented to the public because the city staff saw them as being feasible or implementable. And when we presented these to the public, it was an informational opportunity to, for them to learn more about each option, and then rate their level of support for each. So included in each was a level of cost, or a scale of cost, scale of maintenance, and then an effectiveness ribbon, and that was based on F H W A and I T E, literature and research of before and after implementation for each, and the expected speed reduction. Lane narrowing, curb extension, I'm just listing these off as we go, pinch point, chicane, median island, mini roundabout, speed hump, pavement material, diverter, and landscaping. So those were the 10 options presented to the public for their feedback, and we tried to include local examples where we could, so those that have been constructed and implemented in West Fargo and Fargo, so people could see that these are things that already exist in our street network. And this was an important part of the plan, because this is the future toolbox, so to speak, for the city to be able to look at these measures side by side and see the public support. So the higher the score, the more public support there is. Speed humps were very popular with the public. And then there's a technical support score, which is the same survey results as the public, same survey that they took, but this is the Study Review Committee's responses. And then whether each alternative or option was access friendly, parking friendly, or could be considered a neighborhood enhancement. And those, that note number three, those are the options that really could go either way on access friendly or parking friendly. And then the neighborhood enhancement are those which they add some aesthetic feature to the neighborhood, whether that be green space or soft scape or another detailed aesthetic. On page 35 is where we start the plan recommendations, and these are the community-wide or citywide recommendations of this document. The first and highest priority recommendation is to draft and adopt a traffic calming policy. And included in the plan is a preliminary traffic calming policy flow chart. The formal policy itself could be anywhere from 10 to 20 pages of formal text, but essentially it would outline this flow chart that you see here. And this is to establish a way of taking in traffic calming requests, receiving input from the community, and then taking them through a technical evaluation, ultimately leading to the C I P. And so step one is the traffic calming request that would come in. Step two would be a technical evaluation of the corridor. So there are three criteria, two for speed, one for safety. The first speed criteria is median speed is greater than 27 miles per hour. Second speed criteria is 85th percentile speed exceeds 30 miles per hour. And the third criteria is a safety criteria, which is two or more crashes in the past five years. Now, if you have to meet one of the three criteria to be eligible for a project, if the criteria are not met, then the city will not reevaluate that location for at least 12 months, and would wait for another request after that time. If the, if one of the three criteria is met, then the city needs to determine here in step three, if there are sidewalks on at least one side of the street. And really, that's to determine, is the corridor urbanized, or is the corridor waiting for develop, development, or a portion of it may be undeveloped? And really, the city should wait for urbanization to consider, or redevelopment to consider a traffic calming project on that, on that location or that segment. If, if the roadway is urbanized, so the answer is yes, there is sidewalk on at least one side of the street, then it could go on to step four, which is the public meeting and petition, requiring a supermajority or 80% of affected slash impacted property owners or residents, I should clarify that. If that petition passes, then it can move to step six, which is your capital improvement programming process for capital projects. If the petition fails in step four, then it goes to city engineer's desk to reevaluate and look at those technical criteria. And then they will be able to make a determination of whether the traffic calming problem is a severe problem or a minor problem. If it's minor, then it can't be, it can be set aside, reevaluated and in 12 months. If it is determined to be severe, the city engineer can still forward the project to the C I P process, however, it may not be eligible to special assessments at that point, and some alternate funding would need to be pursued. Another recommendation of the plan is, is really since we looked at those six priority locations to get a community-wide idea about traffic calming, we, we did develop some alternatives and concepts for each site-specific location, and we did run them through the technical evaluation criteria that we just talked about in the flow chart. And, and through this process, we saw that all projects, all six projects would be eligible for a traffic calming project. And the technical evaluation also gave us an idea about the priority of those. So the first priority was 16th Street East, second priority 15th Avenue East, third was Beat and Drive, fourth 10th Street West, fifth 7th Street West, and sixth was 2nd Street East. And then in Appendix A for each location, there's different scenarios that we've developed to address traffic calming. We include a, an existing or do nothing scenario with the associated planning level cost estimate. That's pretty high-level planning level cost estimate for each. So 16th Street, this had the most robust scenario of improvement to address some pretty major safety concerns and speeding concerns on 16th Street East. This planning level cost estimate was just under a million dollars, but most of them fall within 150 to $350,000 range. So this was the most, by far the most robust. Also in Appendix A are the site-specific existing and traffic conditions and subsequent analyses, and this is really where we, we were able to see some themes of traffic calming issues, and we brought those themes into the main body of the report, but the site-specific information is in Appendix A. Then after those, those recommendations, there's another recommendation to look at the alternate locations. So the, the six priority locations were the most that the city heard about from residents, but they also have heard about the four locations here in yellow as well, so that's a recommendation to take those through that traffic calming policy flow chart as kind of, the next projects on the, on the docket for, for that evaluation. The development code, we've listed some things that, that seem to be contributing to the urban design and development of West Fargo that are, that are sort of baked into the cake, so to speak, as far as traffic calming issues go. And this includes boulevard trees, driveway spacing, on-street parking, road width, lane width, and road network circuitry. And these really all play together to, to create a perfect storm, if you will, of, of traffic calming issues. For example, on-street parking and driveway spacing really impact each other, especially if, if driveways are spaced too close together, then there may not be room for a vehicle to park on the street in between said driveways, thereby making the travel lane seven to eight feet, or visually appear seven to eight feet larger or wider than it, than it actually is. Some of it is just simple lane width. For example, 16th Street East, south of 17th Avenue East has two 20-foot driving lanes, which are, which is wider than your interstate lane, so you can imagine it'd be comfortable to speed in some locations. And then there's a concept of road network circuitry, which is essentially a ratio that the city could calculate of the network distance divided by the Euclidean distance, or as a crow flies distance. And this is an example from your development code, this, this figure. So if we're looking at point A to point B, you could see this is the direct, as direct as you can get if you were flying, but the network distance, you could see the, the path in which you need to take. It, it looks a little frustrating, and, and it does feel frustrating for drivers, but it also sends people along, you know, these spines of connectivity that maybe this local roadway isn't, isn't necessarily built to be that spine of connectivity. And so by refining the roadway network and thinking about this as a general concept, creating some efficiency through connectivity, like a grid network is probably the most efficient, but even, even just some more connectivity can impact that directness of travel and be less frustrating on the, on the driver. Some continuing recommendations are just refining this. The traffic calming policy will need to be updated as time goes on. You might run into some issues where it's not working, or it is working, and, and you won't change it, but it'll likely need to be changed as time goes on. And then this study may also be updated from time to time, just to reflect best practices or any, any new techniques that might come on, online. And then this last recommendation is the traffic calming program, which is ultimately the traffic calming policy in action, meaning you're taking in requests for traffic calming, you're evaluating the projects and either setting them aside or bringing them forward to the C I P, to really forward those, those goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. Funding is going to be your usual or typical funding that you use for capital projects. However, if there is a safety concern on a corridor, it may be eligible for federal H C I P or Highway Safety Improvement Program funding. That's administered through North Dakota Department of Transportation. It is competitive statewide, and I think they, they split it out between urban and rural communities, but that is certainly an option for, for some of these projects. And resources at the end, your technical resources are going to be the F H W A and I T E, a little more user-friendly resource that we found was the NACTO Design Guide, which is the National Association of City Transportation Officials. And then I think Dustin's not in the room, so we did put him as the contact on the last page. He's, he didn't volunteer for that, but I hope he's alright with that, so people can, he volunteered, there we go. And that was a very brief, I know I ran through it pretty quickly, but be happy to answer any questions or comments you might have about this study. Thank you.
What's the chances of getting 80% buy-in if it's going to be special assessments to pay for this stuff? Less than 80%?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Gust, it was, we hemmed and hawed on that a little bit, but there's oftentimes when there's like a one person who's really pushing on something. So we first want to go through that technical, is it really determined that it's needed? And then, okay, it, it would help, but we don't have a pot of money to pay for all this, so now is the neighborhood. So if our, if our funding mechanism changes, we'll, we'll amend that portion of the flow chart and bring it down to 60 or something like that. You know, but right now, there just isn't really a funding mechanism to take care of this. We don't have enough money to do it. So that's where we had to get, we had to get kind of strong on that, because without money, it ends up being just really unpopular that we're not taking care of that.
And there's not federal money available for stuff like that?
Luke, who is a former intern at the city of West Fargo, I want to say, really excited that he's back in this capacity. Yeah, yeah. Right now, he spoke to the H C I P fund. We can get H C I P funding on some of these arterials and collectors that are on the federal highway system, but just a local road, like, you know, a neighborhood complaint on a local road, it's hard to get some federal funding on that, so.
Anything to add on that, Luke?
I would just add, I would just add that H C I P does allow eligible projects on, on local roadways as well, so. And then, any DOT is typically looking for, some of these projects are smaller dollar amounts, because they're, some of them are just a couple features. So they do need to balance that and spend the money on a yearly basis. So sometimes those smaller projects are pretty smart to apply for, just because they might be looking to spend a smaller dollar amount to kind of balance things out.
I stand corrected. Hopefully Aaron takes note of that.
Couple of questions and comments. Number one, is this primarily a study only in the, the examples you've included? Are those just areas you looked at as examples for the study? Are those actual areas that the city believes there needs to be modifications done?
Those locations came directly from planning and engineering departments because of the amount of feedback they received, or complaints or concerns they've heard on, on those locations.
Okay, and then, just a couple of comments. Well, back to the beginning, where you made the presentation there that you can't use stop signs, traffic signs, and you can't use speed limits to control speed. Then the next comment was, as the speed goes up, the risk increases significantly, including the risk of serious injury or, or death. Seems kind of contrary to me. I think maybe that's not part of the calming package, but that certainly controls, if you can control speed, you can control a lot of the factors that are creating the calming issues.
Yeah, that, that is a good point, and I, I think I should sort of clarify that those, you know, traffic controlled signs, signage and devices are essential to your, your transportation network. However, it does require enforcement from the police department. So the traffic calming features that we've identified are those that are self-enforcing. I mean, you're only going to drive 35 miles an hour over a, a speed hump one time, and then after that, you're going to figure out that, okay, I have to slow down on this corridor. So it's sort of a, they, they enforce themselves, whereas the signs, it, it is, it is a limit, it is the law, however, it does require enforcement by the city.
Okay, and then two comments, because I, I served on the commission for 12 years, and the mini roundabouts are detested by citizens.
Yeah.
They're nothing more than rock piles in the middle of the street. And the 19th Avenue example you have, I don't know how many times the citizens complain about that, trucks driving over them. It's just, and you try to drop something into an existing roadway, is, it just doesn't work. And the one in Charleswood is, I don't know how many times that gets driven over every day.
Yeah.
So those real roundabouts, in my opinion, are great. You know, the ones that are established with a development, stuff like that, but
Right.
Using mini roundabouts personally, I think is a bad choice unless you got a lot of space, or you can acquire right away within the
Right.
area around that.
Yeah, and we did talk to engineering about that, and including like the 19th Avenue example, because they know it's been complained about a lot, and Andrew Ruckey in, in engineering admits that the design of those retrofitted roundabouts has been poor, and it needs to be improved. So it's, it's not something that the city staff want to exclude, because they do function very well, but the design of them thus far, and there's a couple of examples, two of which you just mentioned, they, they should be improved, and they can be improved. We actually included that one in the, in the survey because it was bad, just to, to get the reaction of, of residents. And what was funny, what came out of the survey results were those who didn't live near that 19th Avenue roundabout, they, they, they wanted mini roundabouts. Those who lived near the mini roundabout that was existing, they didn't want another mini roundabout. So it's kind of funny to see that play out.
Just one last comment, and the city has done a lot of this in the last number of years, is the road bumpouts, we just did it on Cheyenne Street, and that one's designed a little better from what I've seen, but
Yep.
you drive along, for instance, right out, you know, right over here on 7th, and you see how they, our plows obviously hit them every winter, and it's, it's hard on equipment, and they look like heck on the corners. I mean, it's probably not a bad idea, but is there a better engineering on those? I guess we talked to our engineers, engineer we got sitting here is, why don't they put tapered or flattened corners on those, so it doesn't take out our plows?
Yeah.
And also, it looks, looks like heck, you know, when you get to the summer, you got chunks taken out of them, and I know we're using a lot of that in the city as calming measures now.
Yeah, that's a good point. I think the design from engineering and public works, their concern is about snow removal. They have to put the delineator, or the, you know, the removable delineator and stick it out there before the first snowfall, and then the taper may not be subtle enough where, yeah, they, they get beat up pretty good, so that is a consideration moving forward.
Thank you much.
Welcome.
Just to your comment, Commissioner Thorsted, we, we are looking at the design on, on some of those. I know in the past, some have been put in places where they, it's incorrect placement, so on and so forth, but, so we are looking at that, and we're also trying to work with public works on, you know, potentially potentially, uh, altering some of the methods of snow removal around those areas. So we, uh, we're aware of the problem, and we're, we're trying to address it.
I'm curious about the process here. Um, you're, you're bringing it to us for what purpose, and then what is supposedly next? And what are the implications for those particular spots that have been researched?
Yeah, so they, uh, we're bringing this to you today, uh, for a recommendation of approval to City Commission, uh, of the study. And then the next steps would be those recommendations that, that start on page thirty-five of drafting and adopting a, um, a traffic calming policy. And that's where those six priority locations would come in. They've been evaluated preliminarily, uh, but then they would go through that traffic calming policy process, ultimately leading to the CIP or not. I mean, it depends how that shakes out. So that's the ultimate goal, is to get some momentum and action moving forward on, on some of these locations, and be able to address new ones as they, as they pop up.
So at this point, the request is to, I don't know if approve is the word here, but the study itself, and not any particular conclusions in the study.
Right.
It's more, here's what we are saying.
Yeah.
And the, a policy would need to go through another round.
Yeah.
Discussion and so forth. And any particular recommendations for those six sites would also have to go through that process.
Right.
Any approval here is not approving any particular decision or policy.
Right. It would just be for the, the study itself and the document.
Um, I just want to just, this is a little bit more of a technical, specific study. If it were a larger study, we would likely have a consultant. And it's kind of a fun project to do, because we allowed MetroCog staff to do it, as opposed to making it a larger study. It's really technical in nature. We did have some public engagement, but it wasn't expected we'd have a lot of participation in that, because it's very, again, very technical in nature. So it was primarily, um, planning staff, Malachi, and, and our transportation engineer, uh, Andrew Ruckey. I think you may have met him before a couple of times, working with Public Works to make sure they make some good determinations. And we have our road right-of-way crew that gets a lot of complaints on this, brought them and got them involved. So, um, this will inform future modifications to ordinances. It's not, this is what we shall do. It's, again, more informing future things.
It's more accepting the study.
Yeah.
Recommending anything about it, but it's, here it is.
And if there was something that like triggered, um, like mini roundabouts, for instance, is, I've seen that, it doesn't work. You know, if those, if there's any of those things that really trigger, uh, or elicit some sort of really negative comments from the Planning Commission, that we can forward those comments to our City Commission as they consider it. So, uh, we would take this study to the City Commission and, and, and go from there. If there's some major comments, we'd sure love to have them, so.
Um, and it did seem like there's still opportunity for public input until, was it January that you're, and this is still a draft, that it's not finalized? Is that correct?
Uh, it is a final draft, so it's in a pretty final state. Um, I, I did find some typos today that I, I will be fixing some very minor language mistakes in the plan. But the final draft is called a draft ultimately, so that the public can comment, and, and that the city would have the opportunity to address those comments, uh, before final approval. And that would be January third, I believe is a Monday, uh, at the next City Commission meeting.
So there's no planned opportunity, at least with this body, for us to, I don't want to call it a public hearing, but, um, public comment. You're having some separate process for public input. We're not going to do a process for public comment? Is the City Council then going to do something? And I, as I say that, I'm also thinking about what it is they're commenting on, because you've got those six particular sites who may have very specific things, and yet there's a process yet to come, I would hope for them to be involved in the specifics for their neighborhood.
Yeah.
Does that make any sense that I'm talking about how the public is involved here?
Yeah, so, yeah. Again, it's a technical plan. Um, any changes to any ordinance or any plan for any project would have those public processes available. Um, for a plan like this, it's just the public engagement side. There's not a hearing of adoption of policy, it's really going to inform policy. So the plan is, again, really technical in nature, not a policy document. Policy document would require more public engagement. We would likely have like a public hearing, um, both at Planning Commission and City Commission for something like that. I hope that answers.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, because I, I saw that there was still public input.
Yeah.
That was possible, but I wasn't quite sure, uh, why that was. And you had said something about, or maybe it was Tim who said, this is an opportunity for if the commission says, well, you know, there's something here that you should pay some attention to. I'd like to go back to that whole stop sign issue, and I don't remember the policy, um, uh, matrix there, but, uh, I, I, it seems like there has, there should be some point at which you're saying, yeah, this kind of stuff is, uh, should be considered for a stop sign, for some other kind of remedies than this. And did I miss that in your flow chart there? That, that ought to be clear, and it seemed, and I don't know, that if these six sites were in fact evaluated, maybe a stop sign is the best way to handle.
Yeah.
Regular place. And yet you can't do it. If you're, once you're down the rabbit hole of this, you can't come back to that. So that seems to me a, a spot at which separating out what requires some other remedies than these calming remedies, uh, maybe just needs to be more explicit, or.
Yeah, that is, uh, that is a good point, and maybe it should be more clear in this plan. Uh, but that is part of the Appendix A existing conditions. We did note where, um, a yield or stop sign was missing, or not at the intersection. And there was also in Appendix A, there are some, uh, yield signs that we do suggest, um, reevaluating for stop control. But that does have to go through the, uh, Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Device Manual, and those standards, uh, which are pretty robust. So engineering was a little hesitant to, um, make that a strong recommendation of the plan.
Right. Um, and it also, I'm sorry, if I, I don't mean to monopolize here, if it's okay, if I say a couple more things, that it, it behooves us as a group to be thinking then about these things, um, as developments are proposed. Because what are we doing in terms of, um, feeding traffic into places that it shouldn't perhaps be fed? What are we looking at in terms of tree plantings and boulevards and so forth? So I don't know what that means for us as a group, and how we are evaluating proposals, and what the zoning, uh, if there are any changes that then need to be considered. But that's something for us, it seems like, to be considering. And that, and also for us, the thought of, um, of neighborhoods, that clearly there were groups or neighborhoods that are very affected, impacted by these, the study, by these situations, and what is it that we can do to facilitate the, um, robustness of our neighborhoods so that they're able to identify issues, they're able to come together, and, um, talk about how they'd like to remedy them and be part of the solution? So again, what could we, as a commission, be doing that would be facilitating neighborhoods, developing themselves more and being more actively engaged? So I'm sorry, that segues a little bit from what you're doing, but it does relate, I think, very clearly with.
I think it hits the nail on the head there, because that is exactly what this policy is proposing. Creating a process which allows for inputs to engage the neighborhood to determine what, and if, uh, these are opportunities. So this is a overlay policy to give, uh, a, a more structured approach to that type of input.
I think it gives us a guidebook that we can go to and say, of neighborhood problems.
Here's some ideas, here's how much, here's how, how it goes. You need to consider these things. I know it doesn't address the, the stop sign, the yield sign, things like that, but I think often. They're within, those things are already established.
Yeah, we can do a little bit more of that with Cog lately, on some studies where you throw out some ideas. We know all our property problem areas, and we'll try to address it. Not necessarily saying we're going to do exactly this on that particular piece of property, but it gives us an idea of how to attack a problem.
So, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong here, I say this is, this is a, a great tool to adjust that, is to provide the input for, for individuals or groups to have a mechanism to make a change, instead of just putting out a little sign that says, slow down kids later.
I think it'll warm, how we might update our subdivision ordinance for design of subdivisions too, in the future. Look at a study like this and help us determine what not to do in the future on subdivisions.
I guess just a couple of comments from me. Nice job, Luke and team.
Thank you.
Good presentation. Appreciate the info here. I learned Euclidean distance, so I think I might pack up my stuff and go home.
I didn't know what that was either.
Yeah, well, uh, aside from that, I guess, maybe back to one of Lanis' points. One of these areas in particular, Second Street, the, the map kind of shows, well, the zoomed-out map shows the entire segment from Thirty-second down to Fortieth. I think we know some of that's still a gravel road, and perhaps not yet in city limits. And so that goes to, I, I, at some point, I presume that road will become part of the city limits, and there'll be development potential, and so I think your point's, you know, very well taken, that as we contemplate what, if there's already a speeding problem there, and we go fill it up with more houses, and it's a straight run, and people are used to speeding, I suppose that's an opportunity for, uh, non-calm traffic. So I just was curious, uh, maybe off the subject here a little bit, but in terms of that area, that corridor, where are we at in terms of that being part of the city and development potential? Or is that?
It is a little bit off topic.
It is.
It's, it's annexed. It is annexed in now, um, so it is in city limits. Uh, we're not really quite sure how to maintain it right now, but we'll figure that out. And I expect development proposals will come shortly after.
I don't think gravel road was the private drive for that farm back there.
No, it's a, it's a, now a city road. So we're, the funny thing is, it's not on a section line, so statutorily, it's a little bit of a fuzzy issue. Um, but as development occurs, that'll be, um, dedicated to the city, so.
Well, and since you mentioned maintenance, that was one of the other questions I had. I saw your study review team, or your, your group that was developing this, had a Public Works staff. You know, maintenance of these facilities, I can imagine, you know, could be a big challenge with bumpouts and speed humps and.
Yeah.
Center medians. How, I guess, did the maintenance crews have enough input into these components?
Yeah, I, uh, we had Scott Tiffany on our SRC, and, uh, he was very straightforward and blunt about, about each option. And he did share some positive feedback about, uh, speed, speed humps and speed tables, for example, and how the technology of the, the blade on the plow has improved to where it, it could float pretty easily over those, and it does float over those pretty easily. But the curb extensions, obviously, are still an issue. And having to send a crew out to delineate where those are located, uh, takes time and effort, um, and resources to do that. So we, we were really happy to have, uh, his support on this project, and he shared some, some great insight. Um, and you'll see that kind of came, came out in that maintenance scale, um, in the evaluation matrix of each. The more, the more hammers, the more maintenance headache, or, or maintenance effort, I should say, um, required for, for those.
Thank you.
You bet.
Yeah, I, I like this. I mean, I, I tend to find that stop signs and speed limit signs are just suggestions if there's not a cop sitting right there. And I'd much rather, you know, drive the speed limit, not have to stop, than, you know, drive five miles over and have to come to a full stop, because sometimes they're, they cause more problems than they do. And in here, I mean, the public is going to be completely involved in this, because eighty percent of the people have to vote yes to approve something like this. So I, yeah, this is, this is great. And I would move that we recommend the commission approve this, maybe with the caveat that, as Commissioner Thorstedt said, that we don't like those mini roundabouts. Some of the big ones, at first, I didn't like them, but I, I really see their value now as I've driven more. But that's all. Half a motion.
Okay, before we vote, anybody else, any other comments, questions? Uh, it's been moved and seconded to recommend to forward this to the City Commission for approval. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any pose same sign? Motion passed. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, good job. I was scared you were going to read a hundred and thirty-six pages, but.
I thought about it, but.
All right. Item number four, non-agenda planning and zoning elections for chair and vice-chair to be held in January.
So show up if you don't want to be there.
Or not show up when you get elected? Is any, well, is anybody else interested in that? Otherwise, I would, uh, I'd be okay with continuing on.
Sure.
So unless there's anybody else that wishes to, um, take the, uh, the role.
I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you. I like the banter.
Hot, hot potatoes.
Oh, Shane, you're so kind. All right. Um, on it, number, item number five, non-agenda request for information and comment regarding potential environmental impacts along proposed project route. Is that what this is? Help me out in this one, then. I see the letters the first I'm seeing it. So what are they asking for? What do we need? How do we respond?
I can just, uh, talk to that one really quickly. So that's just a letter, uh, we received in the mail, just looking for any comments. If you happen to know anything, you know, going on in that area, we just thought we'd pass along and share it with you in case you felt the need to share anything with, uh, the company that's looking for.
Well, I mean, um, what type of?
So staff has no comments or concerns, we just wanted to share the letter with you.
I, I might just add a, a few comments.
How do we respond to this person, though?
Yeah, well, I don't know that we need to or not, I guess, but I, I would just share with this group, and it might be, um, might turn into a, some support for their project. As we saw at the last meeting, we have people that are west of the, not only the current diversion channel, but west of the, the metro diversion channel, that are wanting to subdivide and, you know, build more houses and things. That's naturally going to continue to expand, and people are going to want to go out there. We also, as part of the diversion, if I put that hat on for a minute, we have a number of residential property owners that live south of, you know, Horace, and south of Conroe Road Sixteen right now, that are going to have to be displaced by the project. And many of them may want to stay in a rural Cass County setting, which, um, you know, some of these areas where this pipeline is going, and west of the diversion channel, may become attractive options. And I, I guess I just bring that nexus up, because if there's natural gas service available in this vicinity, where currently there's not natural gas out there, and going under the diversion channel with natural gas will be expensive, challenging. So this pipeline that's being proposed from Mapleton eventually down to Operton could, could potentially provide natural gas service to that part of, you know, Cass County or west of our current city limits. And so obviously that, there's probably pros and cons, as, you know, we, people like natural gas, of course, but, you know, limiting, uh, rural development, and if this entices rural development, there's probably a pro and a con to all that, that, um, perhaps it's more of a county planning commission issue. But I guess I just wanted to bring that, those comments forward, so.
Well, they're not talking about giving single farmsteads in there.
This is a transmission pipeline, but, um, MDU or Excel could certainly purchase gas off of this line and have a compressor station, and, and, you know, it makes it a lot easier, of course, to serve individual users when you've got a source.
They could branch off of this.
That's my understanding.
I don't know how gas lines work. All right, so, um, no action required on this. However, should we respond to WBI Energy in some way? Is that, is, would that? Is that, is, would that be appropriate? I don't wanna ignore the individual cuz my name was, it was addressed to me, so.
I'd I'd say if you have any comments that you, um, you can just pass them along to staff and we can get those sent out.
Does anybody uh here have some other comments or concerns that I should forward on? I will, I will respond to this individual.
Typically, uh, Chairman Chair, we would uh, we would provide an email or a letter of no comment unless as the board, you have a comment.
Okay, let's do that.
That's typically what I would go.
A- Aaron Nelson is gonna handle that.
He might handle it.
Yeah, on the same vein, what what's going on with the Gensler subdivision? I mean, do you go to the commission and try to um?
Was this the topic last week which we rejected?
Yep, so it did go to the City Commission. He did appeal to the commission and the commission did reverse uh the planning and zoning recommendation for it and ended up approving it in the end. Um, we did receive some comments from the uh County Planning Office indicating that the individual, the applicant would have access to the property in the event of a hundred-year flood. And it would be to the west and to the north of where the property is. Um, regarding the issue of the fact that it was, uh, I believe the other issue was the fact that it was in an area that was identified by the comprehensive plan as being an area that we wanted to avoid further development within, um, until the flood diversion was built. Um, they decided that that, um, based off of prior applications that the city has received for the folks that live out in the ET area, that they were okay with uh Mr. Gensler moving forward with his application. Um, so he still needs to submit a final plat uh for approval, um, which will probably go to the City Commission on January third.
Thank you, Malachi. I just wonder if, you know, what, if the com- comprehensive plan says this, is the comprehensive plan wrong? Because that's, that's what I thought we were following. April's position that we're spending whatever, four billion dollars on a diversion. Now we're allowing people to build outside of it, which is is a certainty for that. And, you know, I I tend to agree with. And if the comprehensive plan says, we want, we wanna see what happens first because granted, the plan is for nothing to happen, but that was the plan on the West River diversion too. And I've seen what's happened on the outside of that and impact. So I, you know, what, moving forward, what do we do? I mean, we're not getting, you didn't give any staff recommendation on that. And that, that's, that's why I voted to deny it.
Yeah. I don't wanna step in from Malachi nor the new planning director, but just based on past history, um, there's a couple of items on this one that I think that it's a little bit different scenario. Uh, one, they were able to determine that they can get access at or above base flood elevation heading to the west. We found that out, found that out, I think, the day of or after Planning Commission last time. So we established that that's there. Uh, that's part of the technical criteria that we wanted to meet for planning commissions. That was met. The other one where I think we teeter on is that they kept it zoned ag. So they still have a legal right to do something with their land. Um, yeah, Larry would have always told me that a single-family home is about the lowest amount that somebody can do on their home. So you keep it zoned ag, you require a lot size requirement, you let them build a house. I think we kind of teeter on that. And Dave, we've done that over a number of years at the county and here. Um, cuz development, to me, is anything, really. It's a house, it's anything outside of a flood plain, outside of a protected area. I'm not really supportive of that, but our commission, they're, they have that right to make those policy decisions. I don't think it, I don't think it scraps what our comp plan says because we're real still, we're still really, it's it's quantifying how much development it is. And, you know, with one house on forty acres, that could be construed as really not much development. If they came in and said, I wanna rezone that to rural estate or rural residential and the commission backed that up, then I'd say, okay, we need to take a look at our comp plan cuz obviously we didn't get it right. So I think we're okay. It's just a matter of difference of opinion between our Planning Commission and our City Commission, but it's not detrimental.
No, I think it's, it's okay.
It's okay, yeah. So that's where we, we, you know, we changed the ordinance to require forty acres, either deed restricted or forty acre full lot, so that helps.
Yeah.
So I feel okay, I I'm okay about it. I'm just, I wasn't supportive of it nor was I.
The guy was ticked, that's all.
Yeah.
I don't wanna get yelled at.
You got yelled at?
I know, it's mad. You missed it.
I'm glad Eric was in charge of it.
Yeah, I noticed that.
Are there any other non-agenda items?
Move to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We moved the second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
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 We'll also be setting the times uh and days for the next year at the next meeting.
Are we sticking with Tuesdays?
Well, we're, we're gonna propose to stick that way, but if you guys got any issues.
Well, I still would prefer Mondays, that that's been mine. But I understand because we can't have legal because of the conflicts, it's more important that John is, Mr. Shockley is here.